Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We have a video for you for tonight. Please start it.
It has been a blizzard of activity since our last news update in February, so let's get right on to it. Stay woke. That was the theme for this year's Colors of Pride Assembly to celebrate Black History Month at North Penn High School. Students in the African American Awareness Club spent weeks preparing for the assembly and evening community presentation. Through skits, poems, and videos, students shared their perspective on current social topics. From cultural hairstyles to kneeling during the National Anthem, the AAAC covered a broad scope of national discussions with the goal of sharing a perspective about black culture that some may not have had an opportunity to hear before and setting the tone for discussing uncomfortable and controversial topics. March 2nd was Read Across America Day. North Penn School District celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday in many creative and interactive ways. Students and staff dressed as their favorite characters, and classrooms across the district had guest speakers from the community, district administration, and members of our North Penn School Board.
$1, it'll go... No, 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 you didn't pay $1. We're raising money for the... Okay, go ahead.
That was the sound of student appreciation, but Dr. Bauer wasn't the only administrator to get whipped cream on his nose because all administrators were getting pied to wrap off the North Penn Educational Foundation February. All throughout Student Appreciation Day, students got to pied administrators, play Kahoot in the senior caf, and read special messages from staff members in the KPOD concourse. The message was loud and clear: Our teachers and administrators appreciate us. Our unified Bachi teams took first and third place at the Montgomery County Championships, held at Satterton High School, and all this in its first year in competition. Team Navy earned a spot in the PA State Championships at Hershey at the Hershey Arena later this month. Good luck in states. Yesterday, all across our county and our area, a nationwide walkout was coordinated by students to honor the lives of the 17 people killed at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida. Students walked out of class for 17 minutes, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at North Penn High School. Students quietly and somberly listened to students who read the 17 names and returned back to class. After school, students led a discussion on issues of school safety and how as a community we can affect change. Our Spartans, Lancers, and Chargers gathered at Penfield for a night of friendly competition as teams from each school faced off against one another in an academic challenge. The winning team was from Penfield. Thanks to all the participants, advisors, and chaperones for a great evening. North Penn High School will hold its first of many North Penn Talks next Tuesday at North Penn High School with a presentation from Kevin Hines. Kevin Hines is one of only 33 of the more than 1,500 people who have jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge and live to tell a story. You are invited to an evening presentation about helping our students who might currently or someday experience anxiety, stress, and other factors that can negatively impact their mental wellness. More information can be found on the district website. That's it for this North Penn News Update. Check out all of our content online anytime at youtube.com/NPTV. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled Action Meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, just like to announce that the Board met in executive session, March 15th, 2018, from 7:00 to 7:30 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations. Okay, so first up, we're going to have recognitions and proclamations.
Thank you. We do, this evening, have some students we'd like to recognize for their outstanding accomplishments. And the first student we would like to recognize is a student that, for his accomplishment in the AP Computer Science Principles exam, and with us this evening to make the presentation, we have Pete Nicholson, one of our Assistant Principals at the high school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of Board and Administration. In May of 2017, almost 5 million advanced placement exams were taken globally. Of those exams, only 511 students, about 1%, scored every possible... or scored correctly on every possible question on an exam by answering each multiple choice question correctly and earning full points on the free response section. Benjamin Curley, a ninth grader at the time, was one of those students. Ben earned a perfect score on his AP Computer Science Principles exam, one of only six students in the world to do so. Ladies and gentlemen, I present Benjamin Curley, North Penn High School, Class of 2020.
Congratulations. That's really awesome.
Good to see you again. Congratulations, too. If you want, just go around and have a welcome board. Pete, you want to just follow?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Good to see you. Congratulations. Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it all. As you saw earlier on the video that we had playing, the Colors of Pride Assembly was done this year, and as always, but especially this, your tremendous job done by our students and the advisor for the African American Awareness Club, Marjorie Dieg is here tonight to talk about that. We'd like to have those students that are officers in that group, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for welcoming us here tonight. Every year, members of the African American Awareness Club write and create a program for the North Penn student body during the day and their parents in the evening. This program is called Colors of Pride. Typically, the students have talked about history, culture, fashion, and other things that regard people of color. This year, the students of the African American Awareness Club decided to tackle a different topic, one that highlighted Black Lives Matter, Colin Kaepernick, and other social issues that are affecting people of color today. We had over 1,000 students attending the assembly, and it was well received by the student body, staff, family, and other members of the North Penn community. We would like to personally thank you all for your support, and also thank the members of the School Board who attended both during the day and the evening time. Up first, we have Ms. Dalen Brown. Next, Ms. Siyani Edwards. Ms. Joanie Jackson. Mr. Tyreek Kelly. Ms. Michaela Mosley. And Ms. Jamie Solomon.
And in case anybody would like to watch this on TV, the School Board meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable, Channel 28, or Verizon FiOS, Channel 29, on the following dates: Friday, March 16th at 7:30 p.m., Monday, March 19th at 12:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m., Tuesday, March 20th at 12:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m., and Wednesday, March 21st at 12:30 p.m. Thank you. Moving on then to Audience of Citizens, Mr. Patchell.
Good evening. I've already signed the check-in, and my name is William Patchell, live at 404 Bonnie Lane. As I've always said, I've had two children go through the district, and you know, as I've always said, there's always room for improvement. I wish more of the public would be here and make their contribution, so that you would be able to understand what the public is interested in and what is at the foremost of what they want to get done. So, you know, you have to be almost clairvoyant here. But anyway, that young man that just was 1/10th or 1% of... You know what? I'd love to talk to him because he probably knows how the blockchain works, and I said, "A lot of people have no idea how this thing works." But I said, "It is a disruptor," and I said, "By the time everybody gets out and they get their college degree, hey, we don't do that anymore. We've got something new now." So, things are moving at the speed of light, and there's challenges in America. Everyone has a problem. What I really want to talk about tonight is the security situation. I think I talked about this before, last year and the year before. It comes up. I said, "Really? If you want to have security, do you want to have convenience? Do you want to do lip service? Or do you really actually want to do something that does the security?" I said, "My thoughts on the matter was," and I talked to that, you know, Board member about the security, and I said, "Real security? You know what this is? This is an outer perimeter. Nobody comes in, nobody comes out. You don't show up unannounced. You can come in. Do you have an appointment? You made it yesterday? Good. You can sit here, and we'll escort you into the building. There needs to be two lines of security before you ever get in. We might be coming to the end of the days that the faculty has to park off in a remote section, just like they did at Merck. My daughter worked at Merck. She said, "Boy, I have to hoof it in there. It's pretty tough." They have really good security there, you know, for as large it is and as many employees that they have. There's no more students driving in. I'm sorry, we had to let that go now. Once upon in Philadelphia, you could park and you go up, and I said, "You live in a modern society here. Do you want security? They're outside. What exactly do you want? What is your comprehension of security? Do you want real security, or you just want to have 17 minutes to say, 'I'm really dissatisfied about this'?" One thing I didn't like was, what about the students that, "I don't really support this," because, "Do you want security, or do you want to get rid of firearms?" There's a lot of students. You know what? Maybe they like firearms. Maybe they like the Second Amendment. So, when they're sitting in the classroom, all of a sudden, you've divided this group. The ones outside that are screaming for gun control are outside. The ones inside, right away, you know who they are. Well, how come you weren't out there? That's wrong. You made a distinction right away. You know, just because the rest of the country's doing it, you don't have to follow along. I think 17 minutes, sitting in your place, silence, or maybe a topic of discussion, would have been far better. But when you isolate people out there, you make them like, they're separated already. You've segregated. You've got apartheid with attitude, and that's not right. You can't divide people like this. So, as I was saying, I said, "Why would you build a school that holds 3,200 people? You know it's so porous. What would somebody do if they really wanted to get in here? They're not going to come in the front door. They're going to come in on some other way." And you know what? Things happen on the inside and the outside. Remember, we used to have somebody? "Oh, yeah, what happened with our OTC instructor? Oh, yeah, that was on the inside. I don't know what we're going to do." It happens on the inside. It happens at the unexpected times, and if people really want to do things that are bad, you know, you start them off. "Yeah, I expelled them from school. Oh, now I got a ticking time bomb. Is he going to come back? How's that going to work?" If you expel a person, you said, "Oh, well, he's got a bad attitude."
Mr. Patchell? Sorry, three minutes.
Okay. Two minutes? One minute left?
No, three.
Oh. Okay. I think there's problems with his security, and I know that you can address the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like public comment? No?
If I may add, Mr. Patchell, thank you very much for your insights. You're welcome to come to our Safe Schools Committee. We just had one this past Monday, and we'll announce another one during the update today that's on April 10th. That's where we can have some granular conversations. I've always appreciated our sidebars afterwards and appreciate your input. At the same time, I'd also like to point out that, if you are aware or not, there was a public forum afterwards, yesterday, in which both sides of the Second Amendment debate were able to express themselves openly. It was a great learning engagement for students on both sides, learning to be able to discuss with one another as opposed to simply text or be on social media. And I would gladly fill you in more on how that conversation went between students yesterday. So, I feel that we've been able to support the learning environment while also advance the conversation about safe schools.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. So, if we have no more public comment, we'll move on then to recommend approval of the minutes from March 6th, 2018, the work session, and the Special Action Meeting as circulated. Do I have a motion? Second? All right. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Ms. Ott. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Committee reports. Personnel. Personnel met and to discuss matters of personnel, negotiation, and potential litigation. End of report. Finance, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. Finance Committee met on February 26th, 2018, and also had a special meeting on March 1st, 2018. At the meetings, the monthly financial reports and the budget transferred were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. Number one, the 2018-2019 North Monco Technical Career Center budget. Mr. Skrocki reviewed the preliminary budget and explained how the district's share of tuition is calculated. The total increase for North Penn in the 2018-2019 school year is $116,880. Second item is the 2018-2019 contract with First Student. Mr. Skrocki reviewed the terms of the existing contract and the proposed contract for next year. Since First Student opted out of the fifth year of the contract for 2019-2020, the committee recommended issuing a request for proposals based on the existing non-public and public bus runs with First Student. Third item that we discussed was the tax collector audits. Mr. Skrocki reviewed the results of the audits for the Northwells and Lansdale boroughs. There were no issues with either audit. Next up is the 2018-2019 budget. Mr. Skrocki gave an update on the status of the budget. He reported that the application for the Act 1 exceptions was submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Changes that have been made to the budget since passage of the preliminary budget were also reviewed. Next item is the 2018-2019 second look medical rates. Mr. Skrocki reported that the second look rates were 3.38% lower than the first look rates. If the second rates... If the second look rates hold, an additional savings of $734,651 will be reflected in next year's budget. And I'll note that the first year... first look rates were even lower than the prior year, so we're saving quite a bit of money in this regard as we head into next year's budget. Next item we discussed was the debt service overview. Mr. Skrocki reviewed the district's current debt schedule, the current borrowing base, and considerations for future borrowings for construction projects. And finally, department budget presentations were held with the following departments: Facilities, School and Community Engagement and Communications, Human Resources, Technology, Transportation, Elementary Education, Secondary Education, Special Education and Student Services, and Curriculum. Thank you to all of the directors and department chairs for your work in those presentations. I think they were collectively very helpful to us as a Board. Items recommended for work session in tonight's Action Meeting include the January 2018 budget transfers. Those are on tonight's agenda. The 2018-2019 North Monco Technical Career Center budget will appear on the April 19th Action Meeting once the Joint Operating Committee of North Monco votes to approve that budget. The First Student contract is on tonight's agenda for 2018-2019. A request for proposals for transportation also appears on tonight's agenda, as do the tax collector audits for Lansdale and Northwells Borough. The next regular Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 26th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the ESC, and a Special Finance Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, April 5th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. D'Azio? All right. Moving on then to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa?
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on Monday, March 12th, 2018. We're pleased to announce that we have a student representative. Sharon Chong, a senior at North Penn High School, was introduced as the student representative to the Safe Schools Committee and is offered to be a valuable conduit to the student body and in helping us facilitate further communication and input. The committee also discussed behavioral threat assessment and how that could be utilized in the North Penn School District. It's already being utilized at an organic level, but the key now is to make sure that we have a more methodical approach. The committee recommended that a request for proposal be issued for this professional service. I'm pleased to report also that Mr. Dur had already communicated with and learned from one of the leading experts in the country, if not the world, in being able to report to us about behavioral threat assessment. So, we look forward to that RFP being approved later tonight. Scott Kennedy and Chris Dur provided an update on the Community Emergency Response Team. That's called a CERT team. That's a particular type of training that is provided at the district level, and also the installation of security cameras and the annual training provided to our security staff. This was in order to make sure that the Board and those at the committee meeting were aware of the type of training and the background that goes into what our security staff does in a proactive and not just a reactive manner. An update was also provided on the existing PA systems in each one of our schools and the engineering proposal to evaluate the design, or actually, to evaluate and possibly design, a new system for the high school and the concept of a mass notification system. We have disparate types of systems across the district that work in a variety of ways depending on the type of building. The goal now is to have a much more cohesive, consistent, and modern system that could be used, and that is going to be further evaluated by Mr. Kennedy and his team. The committee also discussed holding a Safe Schools Community Forum. The objectives for the meeting were established along with the scheduled date of April 11th, 2018. The tentative time is for 6:30, and this is to be at the high school. More information is going to be shared through a variety of district channels and social media with the goal of making sure we have community input at this meeting, but also stakeholders, subject matter experts, and a facilitated meeting is able to set the strategy and priorities of the district going forward, especially at this important time of budgeting and making sure that we, as a district, have our priorities straight for the safety of students. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Monday, April 10th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa?
Just so we're clear, the... I think the way you stated that, Mr. Casa, that we would be taking action tonight on that RFP for Behavioral Threat Assessment. We don't have that on the agenda. The agenda was published just prior to the committee meeting, which happened then on Monday night. That said, we can certainly have discussion. It can be added as an agenda item under Other Business, or if the Board would like to have some discussion about it and tell us to get busy on that and then approve it at our next meeting, we'd be ready to go and, you know, send it out the next day. So, you can do it a couple of different ways, and the Board can... At your pleasure, we'll do whatever it is you like.
I'll defer to Madam President, but you could probably tell if there's any mistake from me, it's because of the committee's desire to move forward as quickly as possible.
All right. I defer to Mr. Casa. Like, we can do it as Other Business.
We can certainly do that. If we want to craft a motion, we can do it under Other Business.
Okay. So, should we do that now?
Wait, we'll look at Other Business.
For the motion? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Casa. I know there's a lot of public interest in that forum as well, so that's... A lot of people are looking forward to that. Great. All right. Moving on then to Education and Community Policy. Mr. Fusco?
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. The ECP Committee met this week on Monday, February 12th. On the agenda were several topics for the committee to consider and discuss. During the meeting, information concerning proposed textbook and resource adoptions for the 2018-2019 school year were presented. The courses for which the adoptions will occur are Economics, Sociology, World Religions, Psychology, German III, and German IV. Resources for these adoptions include textbooks, online licenses, and teacher materials. These resources will be available for review by the public for 30 days. The committee also reviewed the Special Education Plan that would span 2018 to 2021. This plan is required to be aligned with the School District Strategic Plan. The plan reflects the programs, services, and any anticipated changes within Special Education in the school district. As required, the entire detailed plan will be available for review by the community via the district website for 30 days. Other action items on the agenda included an application for a grant from the PA Department of Human Services Keystone Stars Program that would benefit the extended school care programs at York Avenue and Hatfield Elementary Schools. Also, student travel items were reviewed. Information about the school-wide Positive Behavior Intervention System that is being implemented at NAP Elementary School was shared with the committee. This program is comprehensive and proactive to affect a positive culture and climate of appropriate behavior. Staff have received training and support from the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit throughout the implementation process this year. In 2018-2019, Oak Park and Inglewood Elementary Schools will join NAP in implementing this program. ECP meeting dates will change to the fourth Tuesday of the month, beginning this month on March 27th. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Where on the website do you know?
I do. There should be a link on the front page of the website. It's also available on the Special Education page of the website, is my understanding.
Okay.
I think it's under the... It's either under the Quick Links or the Important Updates section on the first page.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Fusco? Okay. Then, moving on to Support Services. Mr. Casa?
Thank you. The Support Services Committee met on February 26th, 2018. Mr. Kennedy presented options to manage this summer's air conditioning projects. The committee agreed to continue with an in-house clerk of the works. This was decided and proven to be the most efficient and effective use of district money. The committee also reviewed a proposal from Arcaterra to assist with the variance application process for the high school stadium. This is part of an ongoing strategic planning process to see if we can create a better field situation for our facilities. Mr. Kennedy also informed the committee that a request for proposal was issued for engineering services to evaluate and design a new PA system for the high school. You recall, this was just mentioned in the Safe Schools Report as well. The committee also discussed the status of architectural request for proposal process, which is ongoing. The committee then discussed partnerships for athletic field improvements. These are improvements for the benefit of not only the field and dealing with the maintenance of the fields, but also potential cost savings. Mr. Kennedy then presented the annual energy update, which continued to show impressive results with energy conservation, successful purchasing of electricity and natural gas, and a reduced impact on the overall budget. Mr. Kennedy shared information from the early planning stages of the North Penn Long Range Capital Improvement Plan as well, and will continue to give those updates in ongoing sessions. The next Support Services Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 26th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa? Okay. Moving on then to the North Monco Technical Career Center. I believe that's you, Mr. D'Azio.
Yes, thank you. The Joint Operating Committee met on February 26th, 2018. The Joint Operating Committee met on February 22, 2018. We had a very brief meeting in February, and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 19, at 5 o'clock. We are close to having a recommended candidate to fill the role of Executive Director, starting in July 1, and just also so the board is aware, as the spring approaches, we have a lot of students that are going to be participating in competitions and a lot of student travel, so hopefully within the next couple months, we'll have some exciting updates on things that our students have accomplished, and as is usual, sometimes we see some of our students come through for proclamations in the spring when these activities at North Monco tend to be happening with the most frequency. With that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. D'Azio? Okay, then moving on to Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Ms. Ramich?
The MCIU Board met on February 28, the MCIU Building in Norristown, and discussed budget revision, personnel matters, and program updates. The items that pertain to the North Penn School District specifically were the approval of a contract between the MCIU and North Penn to provide professional development to support core reading instruction in the amount of $600, and the appointment of Julian Ramich to serve on the Board to fill the unexpired term of Edward D'Azio. The next meeting will be held on March 28. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Ramich? Okay, then moving on to North Penn Educational Foundation. Ms. Ott?
The Foundation met earlier this week, on March 13, at General Nash Elementary School. At this meeting, the trustees had the pleasure of meeting staff and students who have benefited from foundation grants. First, we stopped by the Extended School Care Morning Program where students were engrossed in STEM kits that we had purchased. These engaging activity kits in the area of science, technology, engineering, and math are shared by all of our elementary schools and are a great way for, to get our students thinking and solving problems even before the school day starts. From there, we moved on to a 4th grade classroom where we funded alternative seating such as wobble stools and exercise ball chairs. We heard from both teachers and students about how such equipment is beneficial to the learning process, motor skill development, and behavior management. Then, following our business meeting, we joined the entire school community in the gym for the Foundation February celebration. Students and staff there raised more than $1,000 for the month-long event, and we got to watch the rewards of their work, like duct taping one of the school's most popular teachers to a wall. I want to thank Nash for hosting us and thank them all, and thank them and all the other schools who participated in Foundation February. Together, we were able to raise more than $5,500 this year. Trustees also discussed the upcoming online auction, which will be held April 24 to May 1. Solicitation letters were sent this week, and we are hoping to surpass the $6,000 we raised last year. By the way, if you didn't see my email, I have committed us as a board to putting together a family game night basket to be auctioned off. So if you didn't see my email, you'll hear from me soon. By the end of the month, North Penn educators will be asked to submit grant proposals for the 2018-2019 school year, and we've set a budget of $18,000 for this purpose. This is just a percentage of what we will be funding in our schools next year, though, which also happens to be the Foundation's 30th anniversary, so more details on how we will be celebrating this milestone are coming soon. And finally, just a reminder, the Foundation is funding the first speaker in a series called North Penn Talks. The community is invited to this free event called Cracked Not Broken: The Kevin Hines Story on Tuesday, March 20, at North Penn High School. Kevin survived jumping off the Golden Gate Bridge, and his inspiring story is of hope and resilience. He will also be speaking to all North Penn High School students throughout the day. The Foundation's next meeting is Wednesday, April 4. If you have any questions about the Foundation, you can contact Christine Labraski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ott, and thank you for reminding me about the basket. Does anyone have any questions about, for Ms. Ott?
No, I'll just comment. The auction that the Foundation hosts every year, there are some really cool items in that auction, so take a look at it. I think anything we can do to get the message out about the auction will only help the level of funds that are raised. Again, there's some really, really neat baskets and packages that are put together, and anything we can do to promote and advertise that would be, would be very helpful.
Thank you. I have one extra report to add that's not on our list. We have a Legislative Committee with the MCIU, and their meeting that we went to was on Wednesday, February 21. This was the first meeting since the November elections, so there were a lot of new representatives to this committee. An update was given on the legislative process at both the federal and state levels, including updates on the budget processes for both. Particular focus was obviously given on how they affect public education funding. Also discussed was a Senate Bill 2, which is regarding education savings accounts and charter school reform. I have a detailed report for anybody who would like a copy. And there was also discussion regarding school safety measures being taken in light of the school shooting in Parkland, Florida, a week earlier. The next meeting of the MCIU Legislative Committee will be on Wednesday, March 21, at 7:30 PM at the MCIU in Norristown. End of report. Okay, moving on then to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I recommend approval of amended Board Policies 5143 regarding Family Fiscal Responsibility and Policy 5113, English Language Development, per Item 518A through G.
Do I have a motion? So moved. So moved by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a settlement agreement for Student 0315181.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry. Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Mr. Casa. Do I have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a contract with Lehigh Valley Engineering to complete an engineering design of the North Penn High School PA system in the amount of $14,500 per Item 1618.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a contract with Architerra PC to prepare documents and assist with the variance process for the North Penn High School stadium in the amount of $6,800 per Item 1718.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to apply for Merit Grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services Keystone Stars Program in the amount of $6,142 per Item 1818.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the revised list for 2018 meeting dates for the Education/Community Policy Committee for Item BA4.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the North Penn School District Agreed Upon Procedures Report for the Lansdale Borough and North Wales Borough Tax Collectors for the year ended December 31, 2016, per Item BA5A through R.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions?
Question. Steve, the Agreed Upon Procedures Report, is that how we always do it?
That's how we always do it. It's just different terminology for an audit. For the tax collectors, they call it an Agreed Upon Procedures Report, but it's really in essence an audit.
If I agree with the auditor that I'm going to take money from here and put it over there, legitimate or not, if we agree upon it, then it's good?
No.
It's just another name for it? And we've always used that other name?
Yes, we have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Isn't that as opposed to audit and review, just limited procedures as they do?
It is. It's a limited, but for all intensive purposes, it's an audit. They test so many transactions, but it's on a smaller scale than what they would do with the school district, as an example. And we do, we do alternate, we select two tax collectors each year, so on a rotation basis, each tax collector over a three-year period will be audited.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of bids, per Item BA6A through B as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to develop and seek requests for proposals for student transportation services effective with the 2019-20 year for like services currently being provided by First Student, and direct the Business Office to prepare the documents for same.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. And just to emphasize, this is to keep as we currently have. Right?
Correct.
So, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just regarding this RFP is just for the 2019-2020 school year?
Starting.
Now, that'll be, that'll be the starting year, correct. We anticipate, we'll probably seek a five-year proposal.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an amended contract with First Student Incorporated for student transportation services for the 2018-19 year, as per the attached BA7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions?
Excuse me, what's your question? Thank you for the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John would be proud.
Yes.
Okay. Good, so, all in favor, right?
Right.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Next up.
Personnel. I recommend approval of personnel items as listed, A through C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts, per Item BA10A through C, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel, per Item BA11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs., by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Give her one. Give her one. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Okay, Mr. Scrocky?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple updates before I give the Treasurers Report. First off, we learned today that the Act I referendum exceptions for which the school district applied were approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. They totaled $1,781,977, and that was spread between special education and retirement. So the board and the district has been approved for use of the referendum exceptions. So just for point of comparison, if the referendum exceptions were used, that would raise the maximum tax increase from the 2.4% Act I index to 3.4% if the exceptions are used. That would increase the average homestead increase from $87 to $124. So use of the exceptions would result in a $37 increase for the average homestead for the entire year. On a millage basis, that would be an additional .248 mil. So basically, an additional 1% in taxation for the exceptions that were approved by the Department of Education. Any questions on the Act I exception approval?
Nope.
Okay, second item I have is just a quick update on our facility feasibility study RFP, aka the Architect RFP. We did open up those requests for proposals, the submittals from the architectural companies. We received 12 proposals in total, which is an excellent response. We're quite pleased with that. We are aware of at least 18 firms that were holders of the RFP, so the fact that 12 responded is really positive. So Mr. Kennedy and I are in the process of reviewing the 12, and we have established a rubric by which we will evaluate the proposals and will recommend a smaller number for a first round of interviews. Third item, just a quick update on the current fiscal year budget. We began the budget year with a $4.5 million deficit. That was the budgeted amount for the 17-18 year, and now that we are in essence eight months through the fiscal year, we are projecting a pretty much a break-even year at the end of the year. So between spending less money than what was budgeted and bringing in more revenue than what was budgeted, we feel that we're going to be making up the $4.5 million deficit that was budgeted, so that's certainly positive news. The one item that continues to stand out is our investment income for the year. We're over 200% higher in our investment income this year compared to last year, which generated approximately $600,000 more than what was budgeted. So that's really good news on the investment front. Finally, I did want to let the board know that we have our Board Docs training for the Board scheduled for April 10. That's Tuesday night. We plan on doing it in the hour between the Safe Schools meeting and our work session that night. So just a reminder, our Board Docs software is an electronic board meeting program that we will be implementing, hopefully by the May meeting, but April will be the training, so please bring your Chromebooks to the April 10 meeting.
Charged.
Charged, yes.
Preferably.
Okay, on the Treasurers Report. This report is for the month of February, 2018. Our cash receipts for the month totaled $7,177,253.61. Disbursements for February totaled $28,168,218.28. So $28 million in disbursements for the month of February is pretty large. That is due to $13.4 million in debt service payments in February. We make our principal payments in February, then half of the interest payments for the year come in February. So $13.4 million out of the 28 in expenditures was a result of debt service. That left us with total available funds at the end of February of $127,101,228.24, which represents about a $5.5 million increase in our position compared to February 2017. End of Treasurers Report. Any questions? Okay, moving on to approval of invoices. I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of February, 2018, in the amount of $31,665,755.33 per Item BA-13.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the January 2018 budget transfers in the amount of $2,857,581.11.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Casa, do you want to go over what you wanted to have approved?
Referring back to the Safe Schools Committee recommendation for a request for proposal for behavioral threat assessment, subject matter expertise services, for the board to approve proceeding. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions for Mr. Casa?
And I do suggest opening it up to public comment, as this was not an agenda item initially, for this specific motion only.
Does anyone have any public comment regarding this specific motion only?
Hi, I'm William Patchell, and I can make a comment on this. I said, there's a lot of things when, it sounds very nice about the behavioral assessment and this and that, but I said, there's nobody in any defined professional career that can that can actually tell anybody what you're going to do in the next 10 minutes. Some people are bipolar. Well, they looked perfectly normal about 10 minutes ago. I don't know what set them off. I really think that, you know, psychiatric examinations and, you know, professional assessments and, you know, that all sounds really fantastic, but nobody can know the depths of the inner mind and what, what ideas are going through their heads. And I would hate to think that, wow, a couple of innocent people got caught up in a witch hunt. I don't think that's a real good idea, because you know what? People have a funny way of like, they get on a topic, and then everybody starts rolling down the hill with that topic. And somebody, you know, the Salem witch trials, that's what happened in that situation. Pretty soon, everybody gets on it. And then, you know what? No one is able to assess, like, well, little Billy, he had, he had a thing in his backpack. It said, "I'm going to do this." That was slipped in by another student. It was printed, so we can't really do, well, they'll pick the phone up and call him, and they'll get a fast ride down to Towah Minson Police. And all of a sudden, it starts rolling down the hill. Well, you had a thing in there. What's that? I don't know. The couple of kids here, they, oh, there's all kinds of things, fake news. They have things with the iPhones, I don't know what. They're moving so fast, I can't, you know, they, they have things that they, that they publish, and I think it's really serious. And I said, I don't want to see people that are innocent get wrapped up in this. And you know what? Oh, yeah, that was way out of control now. Now, I can't fly on an airplane. I can't get a weapon. I can't do this. You know what? All because it was a problem. And then, you know what? These things for public records? I'll tell you what. I don't think the government maintains its security. The Office of Personnel Management got hacked into. That means every single person that was in the military, that somebody has the records of their family and this and that, and experience. Hey, what happened to that? Oh, that didn't work out real well. So this professional assessment stuff, I think you can take that with a grain of salt. I think everybody is somebody, and somebody is, is going to do something where they do. I don't know what they're going to do. If you want to have security, you know what? You got to be proactive, not reactive. Because you know what? I don't want to sit in a lobby, turn into the OK Corral. And I'll tell you what, that person that you have, if you did have a sidearm, if this guy's got an AK-47, I'll tell you, who's going to lose? He's going to have, he's going to have a drum magazine, and he's going to be loaded for, for whatever issue is going to come up. And you know what? I don't want to get away. I want to make an issue. That's the problem you got to worry about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Madam President, if I may. Mr. Patchell, thank you very much. I think you raised some very good concerns about being proactive and methodical. And it's probably important for us to explain what Behavioral Threat Assessment is, which is why we're bringing in experts to make sure that due process and the right checks and balances are put in place by the district so the exact situations that you discuss do not occur. What this means is connecting the dots, which may be disconnected or part of various silos across such a large system as we have as a district, so that we're able to discuss students which may be of concern, not that they're a problem, but to understand how we can help them, maybe with mental health wellness, or, in the very rare instance, being able to avert an incident. And so Behavioral Threat Assessment itself is one of the few evidence-based programs actually defined by the Secret Service after the 1999 Columbine tragedy. They put out an extensive report on school shootings. 2014, Mr. Bill Modzulewski, who was an Undersecretary for the Department of Education, he recently just gave testimony in Kentucky to their state legislature about the importance of being able to avert tragedies through Behavioral Threat Assessment. And that's having a multidisciplinary team have a methodical process to understand how we can best support students and make sure that there's a safe learning environment. So this is a process that we want to replicate and strengthen here at North Penn throughout the district. It's very important to realize that there are many times in which tragedies have been averted. One in Pennsylvania, in the western part of the state, just last month, because people saw something, a student did, and they said something. The US Department of Justice has a website dedicated, it's about averted school tragedies, that lists positive incidents in which Behavioral Threat Assessment has been able to make a difference. We look to make sure that those best practices are going to be implemented here, and we want experts to guide that.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Okay, I guess with that, do I have a, oh, I just wanted to make an announcement. The next meeting?
You didn't actually vote on the, you have a motion and a second.
Getting ahead of myself, yes. All right, so any other further comments or questions for Mr. Casa? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So I want to announce that the next work session meeting will be on April 10th, and the next action meeting will be on April 19th, both at 7:30 here in the ESC. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Fusco. I don't think I need a second, but, okay. Meeting adjourned, thank you.